Let's do it. Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, November twenty first at six thirty one P M. Um, we're doing this meeting all by Zoom because of um some covid issues in town that we just, nobody wants to get everybody sick on uh over the holiday. Uh, so tonight, we haven't done a full Zoom meeting for quite a long time. Um, so please raise your hand, either raise your hand or use your raise your hand little icon uh on your screen so that I can see everybody. Okay? Um, public comments?
There's nobody here.
Thank you, Andy. Um, I have uh one change to the agenda. We are skipping over the police swearing in the new police chief, Mike Arborgas. Darn. But we will do that at the next meeting. Anything else? Who's that?
I want to raise my hand.
Am I, Mike, did you say something? Okay, so. Next, we're moving on to the health officer. So we need to consider the appointment of Richard Warner as our deputy health officer for a three-year term. Anybody have any comments about that? Seeing none, but, oh, sorry.
I do, I just wanted to thank Rich for being my deputy and be to consenting to be available for the next term to work with me. I really appreciate knowing that he's there to be my backup. Thank you.
Great. Jeanette?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that he is willing to serve another three-year term, but after that, he would like to uh find a replacement. So Randy Johnson, that means you maybe.
Okay, does a board member want to make a motion and a second by another board member?
I make the motion that we appoint Rich Warner as our, what is it, deputy or assistant? Health officer.
Second.
Thanks, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did Joe say aye? Yeah. Okay, great. That's it under that highway. We're going to talk to with Travis about the reinstallation of a guard rail on Handle Road.
Yes, so as many of you know, we've had some bad accidents down on Handle Road next to the Hermitage, at the Hermitage Road intersection by the Covered Bridge. Um, we've had three accidents within the last couple of years. Um, some of them have been pretty severe. We are, this is pricing to get that rail reinstalled. I have talked with the owners of the Hermitage Club. Um, we uh, the Hermitage in, I should have said, um, we want to take out the wood rail that's there and and continue the rail all the way around and connect it to the bridge. Um, and the repairs that were, that are listed on there are for the Dover Hill and uh Captain Copeland Road intersection from a previous accident. That's only, you know, thirty-seven feet, forty feet or so. And as you'll see listed too, there's a Goose City section. That's for down where we built that wall this summer, next to the bank stabilization. I, I think we should put something there. It's it, it, the road is pretty close and it's quite a drop, so I'd like to, I'd like to put in, you know, hundred and fifty feet there, so. Uh, I, I res- I did receive a last-minute quote. So I do have two quotes here. The last-minute quote was from Vermont Recreational for eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Um, they went off of my measurements and my photos. And I, you guys got the quote from Lafayette for ten thousand one hundred and eighty-five. Lafayette came down and met with me and walked every site with me. And we came up with a plan to install an anchor at the, on Handle Road to stiffen that guard rail up some, you know? And they also advised to put in eight-foot posts down on Goose City just because it's right on the edge. They, they suggested the taller posts, so I feel like we should go with the Lafayette price. You know, the, you know, they came down and walked it with me and made a plan and I feel good about executing this plan with them. Um, I think we'll save the money on flaggers and I can have a couple of members of the crew do the flagging for the, for them. And that's, that's it.
They do our guard rail on the
Dover Hill? Yes, Lafayette did the guard rail on Dover Hill. I checked with them on um, when they would be able to do it. They say, we're saying early December, they had a job up in uh Ludlow that they were gonna do down, and then they would come down and get us early December. Vermont Recreational said before Christmas, so.
We've, have we ever used Vermont Recreational?
We have, yep. Bob and I had used them years ago when I first started. Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we go forward with the bid from
Lafayette?
Lafayette for ta- eight, can you tell me the number?
Ten thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars.
That number, ten thousand?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five? For early December. Or as soon as I get there.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else? Any other comments?
Nope, I have nothing.
Does it fit in your budget?
It's, it's not gonna fit in the guardrails and signs budget. Not all of it. Um, some of it I can put under the construction because that, that section of Goose City is part of road construction, so I can put it in there. And I also don't believe, I'm, I don't know, I have to talk with Marco, but I don't believe the reimbursement check that we got for Dover Hill got taken back out of the guardrail and sign. I think it just, I, yeah, I think it just went into general fund. So that was, that was almost nine thousand that, or seven, eight hundred, something like that.
Okay.
But, yes, we can do it.
Great. Scott?
Just as glad to see uh Travis is back and what a welcoming back that was.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor? Aye. Joe? Joe?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, my phone is not working, right? It's good.
Okay, um, and uh, so we have second other guard rail repairs on tat- in the town. Are those one? Are these included in this?
Yes, that was all, all one, yep.
Okay, great. Uh, anything else for us, Travis?
Nope, I am all set. Thank you.
Great, great. New business, uh, we have a presentation from Rick Morales of the Small Business Association Updates. Is he here? Okay.
No, I don't.
We'll skip over that for now. Um, then we have the Deerfield Valley Stump Jumpers Horace Hill Trail Concerns. Um, this, who wants to start on this?
Well, I brought it up, Vicky, this is Mike Arbor. Uh, I put it on the agenda, so I guess I, I should be the one to start. Um, first of all, uh, the stump jumpers would like to thank the board and everybody in town for giving the stump jumpers access to Horace Hill as far as the trail that exists there now. We were given a very small uh window to work within. We were moved to a corner of this trail and we are thankful that we have a trail in Horace Hill. With that being said, uh, we were told that the trail would be improved to a point where we would think the stump jumpers that it would be a, a viable trail to really get down to the restaurants. At this point in time, we don't feel that, that that promise was fulfilled. Now, I'm not gonna get into details unless we want to get into details, but I, I want to make a suggestion that, that will work for us. Because we feel that the trail still needs much improvement, we would like to be able to work with the town. May that be the economic developer plus somebody else. And that plus somebody else is, is not, is not the people working on the trail right now to walk the trail come springtime and see if you will let us do the work that needs to be done. And I want it to be done at this board level, not at the economic development level, because that did not work in the past.
Well, we did some, Mike, we did some things with the stump jumpers on the town level, and that didn't seem to work very well either after Hathaway Trail.
I, I, I really think that is out of line because, because after the stump jumpers did the work on Hathaway Trail and the complaint came in, the, the, the trail was fixed within a day. If I was gonna go out on a limb and ask you to fix this trail within a day, it would never happen. So we fixed the trail on our dime, you would never heard a complaint about it again, so I think that's an unfair comment to make.
I don't remember it quite that way. Um, I know that Travis was involved in it.
Yeah, that's correct. Within a day, we brought in material, Travis helped us spread the material, and the problem was rectified. So there is no problem.
I, I know there's no problem now.
Hathaway Trail, with Hathaway Trail was a six-mile trail, the, the people were complaining about a, a couple of hundred-foot section, and as I said, it was taken care of.
Scott?
Just to be clear, so are you suggesting that these, that, you know, it's, it's too late to fix whatever for this year? And so in the spring, you'd have the stump jumpers and, and I'm just kinda, who, who, is it just you guys coming in there? It sounds like you wanted to have another person or?
Very simply, to, to, to be very fair, the stump jumpers would like to fix their own trail after we walk the trail with Eric and somebody else that we can both agree on. Travis, I would agree on, I'm just saying it's not to some third party that I do not know, that might not have uh expertise in snowmobile trails. So I, I think it's a very simple request. Uh, and, and that I think answers the question.
Do we have any other comments? Eric?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, I mean, the work that was done on the trail was exactly what was outlined in the RFP. Um, you know, I, I've, I've explained that, that some of what I think was, was being sought is not possible on Horace Hill. It even says in the RFP, uh, because of the terrain constraints and proximity to the property line and other trails, a completely constructed trail tread that would accommodate snowmobiles is not possible to build sustainably. So I was informed by our trail builder that he had spoken to Mike last winter about what was going to be done. That was, you know, there wasn't, you know, he was understanding of that. Um, I think we talked a number of times about what would be done, which was to work on the drainage to remove um any trees, down trees, um, you know, as many stumps and rocks as we could and to level out some of the larger swales with material, which is what was done on the trail. Um, this RFP was not put, it wasn't snowmobile trail and the rest second, it was the other way around, right? I mean, we, we figured while we had equipment in there, we would make improvements to the trail. If there are additional improvements needed, then that can, you know, we can absolutely consider that. But, you know, and I, I, one of the things that I, I guess but have, have, is there any possibility for grant and aid on this, Mike? Is anybody at Stump Jumper still certified for grant and aid? Because looking around, I mean Wilmington is not paying for trails down there, Wordsboro is not paying the Pathfinders for trails up there. And I, I feel like we've put, you know, between this and the money we spent last year, I mean, we're sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars deep into snowmobile trails. And I feel like, you know, we're, we're in trouble for not, for not doing what you wanted on the trail. And I apologize, and obviously I would like to have a viable trail going down there, but I think, you know, if we can be working together on these things instead of it always being like us paying for it, you know, and it, does that make sense?
So just to be clear, we are not asking for money. Uh, in this case, we were never asking for money. There is more than enough money that is being pumped into Horace Hill. And none of it really was uh, uh, budgeted towards this snowmobile trail. As far as talking to Brooke last November about this trail, there was never any meeting of the mind. When I met with Brooke last week, there was never any meeting of the mind. And, you know, if, if you are not in that loop, I think that should be your concern. Because throughout the whole step of the process, I told you that there was gonna be problems and that things were not happening uh, according to how we saw fit. So uh, again, uh, I could get into detail, but I think it's just better for everyone if we move forward because we can't do anything about it this year. Uh, if next year you think that a tree that I feel might have to come down is not something that you feel is uh, uh in the scope, then you'll make that decision. But I'm not gonna let Brooke, somebody who's never worked on a snowmobile trail, or I, I don't wanna say you, who, who might not have the knowledge of trails, that's why I'd like somebody else out there with us to, to get an overview. I think that's a fair ask. Uh, I just wanna keep it open. I, I'm, I, I know that as the trail is right now, it's not gonna be improved and it's not gonna be a great user experience. Like, everybody else might be able to experience their trails on other parts of this, this property come springtime. Uh, I, I was depending on something, I, I don't think it happened, and I think I'll be able to prove that when the ground opens up again and we can see it a- and walk through it. So I think it's a simple ask, but, you know, you can, you can decide if you want to take this conversation uh seriously.
Scott?
So, uh, Travis, uh, and Eric, would you, would you two be willing to, to go and do this? Is this something where even think you were gonna entertain and then um, and walk it and and go through with, with Mike?
Yeah. Okay, so. Yes, yeah, absolutely. I would, I would, I would walk it with him, sure.
And then, Mike, you're saying you, you guys would fix it up without requiring any more money?
That is correct. If, if we can come to a meeting of the mind of fixing it to the standards that we need to, then we, we would assume the costs. Uh,
As long as it, and, and it has to also not take away from anything that we have just done.
Obviously, that's, that's one of the problems of having to do it, you know, after the fact now that we can't all work together. So I, I understand that.
Does anybody have any other comments about this? Andy?
Hi, yeah, um, so I was just uh listening to the conversation and thinking that along the lines of what you just said, Vicky, you know, at least, you know, um, for automobiles and roads, if you straighten them and widen them, people go faster. Um, I walked the trail today, the snowmobile trail and a bunch of the other uh mountain bike trails up there. Again, absolutely fantastic. It's mind-boggling how awesome that project is, for real. Um, and uh, the snowmobile trail seemed like a lot of other snowmobile trails I've hiked. Um, seemed like it was in good shape. Um, it does seem uh narrow and windy, and I was thinking that was a good thing. There's places for snowmobiles to get off to the side and let each other pass and um, and it prevents snowmobiles from going fast. And this project is primarily a human-powered uh recreation project. And snowmobiles slowing down and taking their time uh in turns and on a narrow trail is not necessarily a bad thing. Having said that, I'm not a trail planner, but I would suggest maybe if uh, you know, since we have invested so much time and energy and money into this project, it'd be good to get some professional advice on whatever uh improvements you just uh decide you want to make to the snowmobile trail.
Uh, can I, can I respond to Andy?
Do you want to say something?
Sure.
You need to raise your hand, okay?
Sorry.
Thank you. But now you can speak, but that's what I asked at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank, thank you. Uh, Andy, since you were so gracious to walk the trail today, did, did you notice if a lot of trail work was actually done on that trail as, as far as fixing the trail or, or anything to that effect?
So, Vicky. Um, Mike, yes, I di- I did notice, uh, you know, a bunch of big stones had been put in one. Uh, turn, there was a deep rock towards the bottom. Um, the issue where you cross the main road in the middle of the property, there's a culvert and a nice little slope where it was a bunch of uh pallets before. Um, I did notice work um, for sure.
Anything else from anybody? Mike?
Uh, okay, that, thank you, Andy, for that, that uh, that assessment. Uh, so again, what we're asking for, and I'd love for Andy to walk it with us, snowmobilers next year, if he'd like. So I can point out to him the deficiencies that I see, so he might be able to see the same thing. But uh, again, we're just asking, walk it next year. If you guys feel that, that we're in the right, we can come and fix it ourselves and uh, and move along and hopefully get this uh, trail up to snuff in the, in the coming years. Thank you.
So it sounds like the board, or is everybody in agreement that this, this, this uh walk can happen in the spring with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Tom has his hand up, has his hand up as well.
Sorry, Tom. Thanks, Tommy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I, I don't personally know a lot about uh snowmobile trails, but I just wanted to bring up what I thought might be an important point for future projects that, you know, we collaborate on with different parties within the town. You know, th- there, there is a trail subcommittee that meets once, once a month. Um, we have about five or six people on that committee. And, you know, we, we, we take our time, you know, away from our businesses and families, just, just like the select board does. And uh, this, this was a, this was a big deal, Horace Hill. So we all gave opinions and spent a lot of time on this, probably for a year and a half. And, you know, i- if my um, i- if my timing is off by a few months, apologies. And before the RFP went out, we did all collectively, um, you know, express that we thought we should keep involvement in it because although, you know, we did hire a quote-unquote professional trail builder that, you know, there was certainly a lot of expertise within the local community. And um, the decision was made, which I'm not gonna argue with, that we would kind of be cut out from there. And, you know, there, the, I, I, whether or not Mike's ideas were in the RFP exactly, I don't know, because we were, as I said, you know, we didn't have any involvement in that, but I, I remember, you know, meetings and meetings upon meetings of talks about improvements on that trail. I, I remember, you know, talks about, you know, adaptive and, and, and hiking with, and I'm sure that's all there. I haven't had a chance to walk them. But um, you know, I, I do think there's some fairly smart people within the community. I, I, I tend to, you know, wh- when I hear about experts, sometimes get a little nervous. But um, you know, I uh, I, I do think that maybe just having some checks and balances within that sub-trails committee wouldn't have been the worst thing. And, you know, maybe going forward, something to consider, that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tommy. Anybody else have anything to say? Joe or Dan, anybody in favor of having a conversation uh of the walk? So is Scott. How about you, Joe?
Where am I walking to now?
Horace Hill. Horace Hill.
When the ground is frozen? Sure.
No, in the spring.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's a good time.
Okay.
No worries. I'll walk it.
Okay, thanks. Dan?
I take it, it's a good idea. See you in the spring.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, um, so next we have, the timing was very nice for Tim to join us for the buy town uh, marketing budget request for funds and presentation. So, Tim?
All right, thanks for having me, guys.
How'd it go Wilmington?
Wilmington approved it, so we're, you know, all set with half of it, so I'll give you guys my spiel and hopefully you'll approve it as well. Jeanette, do you mind making me a co-host so I can share my screen?
Of course not. Let's see, where are you?
Sorry, I should have texted you.
Sorry, can I just jump in here? Rick Morales just, just showed up here. We're ahead of schedule tonight. So after economic development, we'll circle back to you, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Okay, great. So, okay, Mike, I mean, Tim, you're back.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Jeanette, for getting that. So hopefully you guys can see my screen now. So, you know, first, we just wanted to start off with an update, you know, last time we saw you guys was August and we were just getting started with phase three of our campaign, um, you know, out of uh four phases. So just wanted to, you know, give you an update on how we ended out the year. So first of all, you know, we did go out during the fall and do some foliage um, uh, photo shoots. So, you know, we were able to get out to Horace Hill, um, when foliage was kind of at its peak. And, you know, with some of the trails that were already completed, uh, you know, parts of the trails that were completed, we're able to get some models out there and start get some shots so that once that area is all ready to go next year, we've got photos for you guys to be able to use and help start to push that. Um, we also went out and did some hiking at Crosstown Trails as well as biking at Crosstown Trails to get some stuff over there. We did some scenic shots up at Mount Snow, up on the, the chairlift ride. And also went and did some outdoor dining um in W- W- Wilmington at Valley Craft Ales. They've got that great deck out on the water there, so we're able to get some, some nice foliage shots of outdoor dining during that fall time. So looking forward to using those hopefully in next year's campaign. Google Ads, um, you know, again, last time I saw you guys, we were somewhere in August, which is right around here, if you can see my cursor. But um, you know, just to recap, we started off the year with thirty-dollar budget up until March first. So you see a little bit of a planned drop here where we dropped down on March first through April thirtieth to twenty dollars a month. And then um, in May, kick that back up to forty um, for our summer season, where we're really trying to push that tourism. So you can see, you know, we stayed pretty steady all along, um, you know, both in impressions and clicks for the summer months. Little bit of an increase here in, you know, June, where, you know, kids are getting out of school and parents are thinking about uh, you know, vacation and where they're gonna be heading for that summer. Um, but overall, you know, pretty steady progress throughout the summer, which we were really happy with and thought we were having, you know, great results. And then uh, September kicked in and we saw a huge jump. So this entire spike is, you know, basically in a six-week period from September first through October fifteenth, where we just saw a ton of traffic going on Google and typing in things like Vermont Foliage twenty twenty-three, Vermont Fall Foliage, Vermont Foliage twenty twenty-three, Vermont Fall Foliage Tracker, things like that, that they're typing in. Um, and then we're actually Things like that that they're typing in, um and then we're actually clicking in to our website. So both those impressions and clicks, you know, just about doubled from where we were kind of averaging throughout the summer months. So really great to see that. And the other thing is, you know, a lot of these, you know, none of these actually, when you're looking at fall, you know, searches. They're all Vermont. Nothing's, you know, Deerfield Valley or any, you know, more specific than that. So these are all people that don't know where they want to go, but just know that they want to, you know, come and experience fall foliage in Vermont. And luckily, you know, we were able to get them into our webpage, um as opposed to some of our competitors up north. So really, really great, strong results, and that's something that will be taken into consideration for next year, as we'll talk about in a few minutes. But overall, for Google, twenty-five thousand clicks and about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand impressions for the year. Again, during that six-week period, we had five point three thousand clicks. So, you know, over twenty percent of our entire clicks for the year came in that six-week period. So again, really, really strong fall results for us there. But then we also had our our, you know, media buy for our fall campaign, so I showed you guys uh phase three, which we were into. Last time I spoke, but this was where um we ended the year with phase four, doing some uh, you know, fall targeting. Trying to get people here again during that fall season, so had some biking shots from last year as well as. Um some scenic shots that we were able to get over the last few years. Similar type stuff for um the young adult audience with some biking from, you know, one of the area trails. Some scenic shots, you know, you got the valley trail as well as some Mount Snow scenics. But I will say in both of these, you know, the hiking shots in both of those were stock photos. Cause we just didn't have any photos of people out enjoying, you know, hiking in some of our trails. So that's where, you know, it was really critical for us to get out and do that fall photo shoot this year. So now we've got some great stuff in the quiver, so we can do all authentic photography in our uh our uh phase four campaign next year. Then we also did a TikTok and Instagram reel. So just a short, you know, ten-second video that played on both TikTok and Instagram um during that phase four. And all of that was content that we were able to capture in the last few years. So overall, for phase four, we had just over four million impressions. Over just under ten thousand clicks, nine thousand five hundred and eighty-four, so clicks into the website. Um for a click-through rate of point two-two percent and a cost per click of a dollar fifty-eight. You'll see in a second that these are slightly lower than what we were doing for the average of our entire campaign. Um you know, which we, you know, got some great feedback from our media buy company about ways that we can do that next year. Really had to do with, you know, going from summer campaign in uh phase three directly into a uh. You know, a hard stop on that and going into fall foliage for phase four. Um so, you know, we saw a little bit of a drop there as phase four needed to optimize in Facebook. So next year, you know, we'd be looking to kind of overlap a little bit with phase three and phase four, so there isn't that hard stop. And we can keep those numbers up a little bit higher, but overall, still really happy with phase four and how that um turned out for us. So overall, for the entire year, over the four phases of our campaign, which again ran from April. Mid-April to mid-October, um we did, you know, twenty-three million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand impressions. Um if you remember when I saw you guys back in August, I gave you kind of a, you know, my what my projection was based on where we were at. And how much we had to spend more. Um so, you know, at that time, I projected twenty-three million, one hundred and ninety thousand. So we were able to beat that just by, you know, a little bit there, so but really, really close to what we were projecting. And clicks, same thing, really, really close, down just a little bit. You know, we had projected fifty-five, nine, four, two. And we ended up at nah fifty-four, nine, four, nine, but um, you know, still within a percentage point of of what we were projecting back in August. And again, you know, did get some really valuable feedback from our media uh team on how we can make sure that we, you know. Stay a little bit higher during that fall transition next year. Um but then again, you know, click-through rate of point two-four percent and cost per click of a dollar forty-one. So just to kind of look at, you know, apples to apples year over year. Um you know, last year, our media buy was seventy thousand dollars. Um and this year, you know, we had budgeted for seventy, but if you remember, we reallocated some of our cost savings from other projects. And we're able to up that to seventy-seven-five. Um so, you know, we did have an increase in our total spend of ten point seven percent. This year, um but then for impressions, you know, we went from nineteen million over up to over twenty-three million. So an eighteen percent there. Um so if you take out that ten point seven, you know, we still were, you know, if. More efficient with our campaign than we were last year by about seven percent. And clicks, we, you know, uh increased by about o- over seven thousand clicks um there. Which was an increase of fifteen point two. So again, you know, we thought we had a great twenty-twenty-two. But we were able to, you know, even increase the number of clicks um by, you know, above four and a half percent. When you factor in that that media buy uh. Piece. So then the last part is hot off the press. Um I'm really happy to announce that last night. We uh were um offered a partial awardment from this Vermont Grow Program. So this is a two-million-dollar grant from the state that's aimed at attracting and retaining workers in Vermont. Um so it's something that By Town and the Chamber applied for together. Um you know, where our primary focus in By Town really is on tourism and, you know, trying to get people to come and visit here. Um we did see this as an opportunity for um free money, you know, from the state and, you know, a way that we can continue marketing. To people who might want to come and work here. Um so we definitely wanted to take advantage of that. Again, free money, so I I put in for a little over a hundred thousand dollars, but there wasn't a lot of people that, you know, applied for it. Um but we were we were lucky that they were able to come back and offer us a partial, um you know, award of thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. So that would be over the next two years. We'd have that money to spend. Um again, this is hot off the press. We just found out about this around seven o'clock last night. Um so we do have a call scheduled with them for next week to kind of finalize everything. Um but you know, what we're expecting to, you know, have it be part of is the mixers that'll connect, you know, new potential in our current residents. With each other as well as our local businesses, something that Bethany at the Chamber does a great job right now. Of doing mixers for our businesses every month, or they get together and are able to connect. Um so a couple of times a year, we'd be opening that to everybody um that wants to come to these mixers. And, you know, just kind of connect as a community. Also be increasing some social media stuff. Um and basically having a program that would spotlight our current employees, so kind of, you know, that employee of the the month type of thing. Um going around different businesses and just kind of spotlighting, you know, one of their employees. And this kind of has a twofold for us, you know, be able to recognize some of our hard workers that they feel like, you know, they're seen in the community. Um but also, you know, people that are, you know, on our social media channels, those outsiders looking in can see what a great place it is to work. We'll also then be able to do some photography and video with this grant. Um you know, again, probably mostly of workers and people, you know, enjoying work and and living here. Uh that would then go into a digital advertising campaign, which would be potent, you know, targeting potential work workers to come. And live here, you know, we're thinking kind of a um. Uh work where you play type of campaign, you know, we're finding some of those people who have visited here through our tourism. Um and skiing, you know, initiatives, who might, you know, start thinking about maybe they want to live here um full-time. So really excited for that program and, you know, thankful for the state to offer us that amount of money. That's everything I have for an update. Before I head into next year's budget, do you guys have any questions about anything that we have done? Alright, not hearing any. We'll move on to what we would like to do. So for fiscal year twenty-four, I broke it down by um some segments for you guys. So staffing, you know, small increase in the marketing director, cost of living increase there, but then also. We want to create a content creator position. We did have some money previously, um the carved out in the photography. Uh category down lower, that we were had somebody, you know, providing us with a couple photos every week. That, you know, I was able to then post on social media. Um but, you know, we do think social media is, you know. One of our our most important tools that we have next to the website, um you know, and for the chamber as well. So, you know, what we'd be looking to do is hire a part-time contractor who would now be seven times a week finding content. And they would actually be posting it. Um and that would be, you know, for the entire year, fifty-two weeks. So it'd come out to ten thousand four hundred, which we would be splitting with the chamber. So By Town would be responsible for fifty-two hundred of that. Professional fees, you know, we have been running the Vermont How You Walk campaign really successfully for about the last four years. Um or at least for four years, there was a, you know, pause during COVID. Um and even though we did see, you know, great results with that, as we just saw um in this year's campaign, you never want to fall behind in a campaign. You never want to find out as your media buy is dropping off that. You needed to get fresher content up and get something new. So we want to stay ahead of that and make sure that, you know, uh uh we're not becoming stagnant. In that marketplace. Um so we, you know, be spending five thousand dollars on creating a new tagline. As well as um, you know, the art artwork that would kind of go along with the next few years of our campaigns. Campaign creative, as you know, we talked about, you know, we had found some cost savings, you know, to increase that media buy budget. Um in a lot of spots, campaign creative is the one spot last year where we had under-budgeted. Um just with increases in inflation and, you know, the cost of things, you know, that's one that we actually overspent on last year. So we just want to stay ahead of that again and make sure that we have the the proper funding to uh continue. Creating really great creative for that media buy. Website redevelopment, I'll talk about a little bit more uh later, but that has to do with some email. Website maintenance stays the same, and then photography and video, we're going to combine into one category that'll just be called content creation. If you remember uh last year, you know, fiscal year twenty-two, we were able to get a nice big grant from the state. And then we did a seventeen thousand dollar photo shoot with them that, you know, got us a ton of great photos of the area. Hiking, uh some biking, some of the golf course out on the water, um as well as some dining. And that has been primarily what we've used for the last six, you know, uh phases of our campaign. And we plan on using that again for the next two phases next year, but that's a lot, you know. We've then pretty much used up everything that we got out of the that photo shoot. So, you know, we'd be looking to next year, do another photo shoot to kind of carry us for the next. Um you know, eight to ten phases of campaign, so that's where the twenty thousand dollars is. And then chamber admin, as we continue, you know, upping our budget every year, um you know, the chamber, you know, has to write more checks. And, you know, becomes more labor for them, um keeping up with the money that we're spending. And then also, like we've seen with professional costs going up in our creative, you know, they've had some increases as well with. Uh bookkeeping, tax preparation, some of that stuff that goes into administering um the, you know, our program for us. Digital advertising, we'd be upping next year as well. Um you know, this is where, this is really our bread and butter, right? You know, this is how we're getting in front of people. Um so, you know, we want to continue increasing that and spending more money. Media buy, you know, looks like we're going up by eighteen thousand, but if you remember, seventy is just what we budgeted. But through those cost savings, we're able to, you know, put more money into this category. So our actual spend last year was seventy-seven thousand five hundred, so it's really only, you know, going up by about ten thousand there. But that is also in line now with what the five-year plan calls for. And then the other one is SEO, which is our Google Ads. Um so just increasing that a little bit, like like we saw, you know, in that earlier slide, we had great results during that six-week period. Um during fall foliage, so we just want to be able to increase that money there. Um so we're not holding that back at all during that time where we really saw the demand. Then IT, couple new ones here, which is really the big, the big piece of this, which is Air DNA and geofencing. So, you know, we've always kind of been looking for that next layer of data. Um you know, something that you guys ask me about every year, you know, um is how many people, you know. We're, it's great that we're getting these people on the website, but then how many are actually coming into the Deerfield Valley, right? So geofencing would basically set up this, you know, perimeter around the Deerfield Valley. And as people who have seen an ad on their phone pass into that geofence. It would, you know, track that data and kind of again, be giving us that next level of data that we've been looking for, telling us. Okay, this person saw saw the uh ad and then they actually came and visited here. So uh Air DNA would be similar to that, except, you know, that would be tracking people that saw an ad on their phone. And then um booked either a VRBO or um an air uh Airbnb. Um you know, and would track that, so. I definitely think it's going to be a great piece of data for us. Um you know, there are privacy things, you know, if people have. Uh location services turned off on their phone, it wouldn't necessarily pick them up and some other, you know, factors that would play. So it's not going to necessarily be the exact, you know, this number of people came and, you know, and visited us. But it it is going to be, you know, another piece of data that we can help start connecting the dots and seeing, you know, from our end. How how we're performing and how we can make changes. Um and for you guys, you know, what what data we have to show. You know, the success that we've had. Um then email would just be a, oh, excuse me, adding on a little, a couple of uh add-ons into our WordPress site. Which would start collecting email addresses for us, so that's what we had seen in that increase earlier too. Um you know, for somebody to install these add-ons for us, so that would be a one-time fee. But then these add-ons for the six hundred dollars would be a yearly thing. And then webcam is, you know, we'd like to try to get at least one or two webcams set up in some strategic locations. Um you know, again, for those people that are typing in, you know, fall foliage in Vermont and Google, you know. There'd be a webcam on there, on that landing page where they'd be able to see, okay, this is what fall foliage is looking like right now. I need to make my plans to get up this weekend, or, you know, did Dover get that eight inches of snow they were expecting right before Thanksgiving? I gotta come up on Friday when I have the day off. Um you know, so these webcams would just kind of give our visitors a live look at what what we're. Seeing here in the valley. And then printing is the one area that I went down on this year. Um so stakeholder materials. We'd like to do something, we're not exactly sure what, but you know, similar to that VisitVermont.com initiative we did last year. Um just something to engage our businesses and their employees and get them excited about what we're doing. Um about, you know, the website so that they didn't know where to send people. Um and just kind of, you know, have have some interaction and, you know, with them as well. And then Guilford, um you know, just enough money to basically be able to be on the um the shelves from May through October. Like we were this year with some rack cards, so that would cover the the cost of being in Guilford as well as what it would cost to print those rack cards. So all told, that brings us up to a total this year of two hundred. Two hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Um we are anticipating, you know, uh carryover of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. So that brings the total act to two hundred and fifteen thousand ninety-six dollars. And divided by two, that's one oh seven, five forty-eight. Um and again, I am happy to announce that Wilmington just approved that amount, um so no pressure, but um. You you know, we do have half of that funded at this point. Then lastly, just wanted to share some letters of support with you guys. You know, we did get one from Chapman's Antiques and, you know, just to paraphrase here. You know, what they said is normally we experience a downtime between Labor Day and foliage season and then foliage season till Thanksgiving. And that's not the case anymore. Every weekend, people continue to come. Um so exactly what we want to hear, that, you know, where those, where there was previously downtime, we're keeping our our businesses busier. Um and then, you know, from a Will, uh sorry, a Dover business, Janine's uh Home and Style Boutique. You know, she was, you know, happy with um the results that she got, you know, being a new business and, you know, just wanted to emphasize how important she feels. And you know, just wanted to emphasize how important she feels it is that being on Route one hundred in Dover. You know that those people come into Wilmington, know to come up Route one hundred and into our town and into her business. So that's everything that I had for you guys, is there any questions that I can answer or sorry, Eric, do you have anything to add?
Uh I don't, Tim, nice work, I just want to thank you for everything you put into this, I think this is a a great plan for us moving forward. Um I think it's fiscally responsible based on what was provided to us when we had our our. Plan laid out for us by Charette a few years ago, so I think um you know, the I you know, we're we're starting to see some grant money. Uh out of the state, which is a great thing and Tim's been doing a great job of snagging as many of those dollars as he can. Um but those aren't going to be around forever and and there, you know, may or may not be anybody to help us. So I think we need to continue on the course that we've been on of of helping ourselves and I think it's. Everything is trending in the right direction from what we can see and you know, our department is in full support of. Of this recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions of Tim or Eric, Scott?
Uh first of all, uh love that you got that grant, uh good work, Tim and everyone, that was great. And appreciate all all the stuff that you guys are doing, I think that's really good, anecdotally, it seemed like there was a lot more people here in some of the. Times where there aren't um but a quick question, if I if if a Dover resident was hypothetically to come to me and say. How do I know that um Dover is being equally represented? Um or our businesses and all of that, is there any data out there or anything like that? I I get that this is like, we're bringing people to the valley and this is we're all one, but um.
Currently, no, um you know, we're definitely cognizant of it, it's a group effort. And so that's why like when you see these photo shoots that we did or you know, the ads that we're putting out, you know. It's not always fifty fifty, you know, sometimes, you know, just different photos work out, but we're definitely cognizant of it. And try to promote those activities that you know Dover is known for. Um you know, I think next year, that's something we can definitely look into, Scott, with the geo fencing. Is maybe there's another layer of, you know, there's the bigger, you know, Deerfield Valley and did they cross into that? And then, you know, did they spend all their time in one town or another, or did they go to both, you know, that's something I can definitely look into. Um you know, and that geo fencing might might help give us some data for that.
Cool, good, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Does anybody want to make a motion to fund the Byten- the Bytown marketing budget? Dover's share being one hundred seven thousand five hundred and forty eight dollars.
I'll make a motion, Joe Mahon.
Second.
Anything else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tim.
Dan still with us?
Yeah.
Huh?
Thank you.
Dan's here, did you vote, Dan?
Yes, I did, I said I.
Thank you, it's just kind of hard to hear who who is saying. So thank you, Tim, thank you, Bethany, thank you, economic development people and Bytown marketing people.
Thank you guys, appreciate the support.
Thanks, so now we're going to jump back to. Uh under new business, we have the presentation by Rick Morales on Small Business Association Assistance Updates. So Rick, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you so much, um thanks for the time opportunity, thanks to Eckhart, um the board members. I'm from Puerto Rico, I I I have been here since mid July, so uh I have a a lot of of updates. But first I want to say uh that we are the Federal Agency, uh Small Business Administration. Uh we work at the Office of Disaster Assistance, uh we work jointly with FEMA and USDA with the other federal agencies. We are still here, we are still on the ground, right now the deadlines to apply for physical damages with the SBA, they already expire. The grace period of two weeks two and to apply with FEMA and the grace period uh that expired too, but we have different programs. Right now, the physical damages that was for uh damages on infrastructure, real estate, for homeowners renters, nonprofit and businesses. Because because the we don't only provide uh assistance for businesses, we also provide assistance for homeowners, renters, nonprofits. And businesses and I also visit and I do all these meetings to inform about uh our federal agency. Because all this in uh information is important, not only for this past event, but for possible future events. That's why I also do this kind of meetings, I think that this is my first virtual meeting like in a year because I always uh go in person. So because I did the meetings in Wilmington, Halifax, New Fane, Brookline, Dumersdome, in Winham. Because I know that the damages are more on Washington County, Windsor County. But you all know that the people move from different towns to other towns, to other counties. And we want to reach the most people as possible and we do all these uh celebratory meetings. Because the government help us sharing the information with the survivors, citizens, with the people, and that's why I'm doing this meeting. So continuing continuing with the information, so we don't only provide assistance for the uh businesses, also homeowners renters. Nonprofits and businesses, we don't provide funds for government, we are not like FEMA that they have. Funds for public assistance, for individual assistance, like USDA that they have funds also for public assistance, like bridges. Uh there are roads and they have, they also have for uh homeowners repairs, business repairs. We are, we are more individual assistance, the people um always get discouraged with the SBA. Because you all know that we are a federal agency, we are smaller than uh FEMA and USDA and we are not grants. So I I talk about that later, but I give some more updates. So related to the uh centers, disaster recovery centers, business recovery centers. Uh the disaster recovery centers are from FEMA, but we were there too and the B R Cs are from SBA. But they are uh, yeah, they are already closed uh for this uh present presidential declaration. They are closed permanent permanently for now, but what that means, that the people to apply, they need to go now online. They need to apply online, so that's the best way uh to go to apply. But with the SBA, uh the survivors, the people that is affected, they can apply with the SBA. Through uh SBA dot gov uh on the internet, so it's no not possible way to apply in person. I know that that's the best way to go, but that's the only alternative that we still have uh with the SBA. It's the same with uh FEMA, the the with FEMA to apply with FEMA. I know that the deadlines expire, but some people are still doing appeals, reconsiderations. They are still doing the procedures, so the best way to go is through internet, by the website and also. Uh by the phone, by the eight hundred number uh with the SBA and FEMA too. So I'll be sending uh the flyers, uh because I didn't, I didn't come prepared to do the uh some meeting. Because I always do the physical meetings, but I'll be sending uh an email with all the flyers and updates with more information. So you all can have it, so you you can ensure that we're your citizens, if you have family or friends or networking. That they'll still, the if they still need help related to the past floods of mid July. The incident period is between July seven and July twenty one. If if some people had, if they suffered damages before that or after that period. They uh can qualify for the any assistance, for the FEMA assistance or for the SBA assistance. That's the uh incident period that the federal government established for the people to apply for uh these funds. Also, uh like I said, the physical uh deadlines expire, but we have the deadline for the next year. Uh uh until uh April fifteen, that's for economic damages. What that means for the losses on profits related to the past floods, everything needs to be related to the past floods. For the damages, it's not for a new improvement, for to buy a a machine, to have better sales. The um the economic damages, that's only for businesses and some nonprofits. Right now, for those programs with the SBA, homeowners or renters, they don't qualify. Because they only qualify for physical damages, for economic damages, it's only businesses and some nonprofits. Of of course, if they have uh the five oh one, if they have good standing complying with all the requirements of the state. So they may qualify, so that's the uh latest updates uh with the SBA programs. Uh that um to give you some examples, that for payroll, ordinary expenses of the businesses. Uh to keep uh to keep the businesses in business, that's the main purpose of of this. So now I'll talk about how the people can take advantage of this. Including the sor- uh the businesses and some nonprofits, like right now, but I'll talk also about homeowners renters. For possible future events, because I know that like ten years ago, Irene happened here too, so we never know. So all this information is important. Uh some people like like I like I said, that people get discouraged uh with the SBA because we are not grants. So uh with the uh for for homeowners or renters. If you are denied by FEMA, the people need to comprehend that they need to complete the procedures uh with the SBA. Because most of the times FEMA refer the people to uh SBA. But you'll know that they get pissed off, mad, they don't want to apply, they say that they are not going to qualify, that they don't want it. But with the federal government, that's the best way to go is be proactive. And complete the procedures with the federal agencies, because that's the evidence that you are complying with the requirements. So if you are denied by FEMA and then you complete the procedures with the SBA and you are denied by SBA, you have two denagations. So with that evidence and all that, SBA might might refer you to FEMA again. And FEMA might give you all the other disaster assistance like grants. In short, at least you can have hope to receive something, but if you don't complete the procedures, you are not going to receive anything. Like I always say, nothing to lose, no fees to apply, you don't have to accept that, so that's uh one technique that the people use. Now, for the businesses and for owners too, uh if uh some people use these funds, if they had a. An insurance claim or the if they uh did that and they are waiting for a payment or settlement. Because if they if they can get, they sometimes they can get, they can receive the money faster with us. They might receive faster the money, so they can rebuild quicker. So instead of waiting for that, they can recover faster and quicker. And then if the the insurance company pay you, they have to pay first for the federal agency. So that's another way, because we have the one year deferment with zero percent interest rates, no nothing that year. So you don't have to pay nothing for that year, so if you receive that payment and they pay for that, you already recovered. And you you didn't have to wait for uh the insurance company. The same, if you don't have um uh insurance company, insurance, or if you didn't claim that, or or you don't have any anything of that. You have one year to be proactive and to find other resources like with the state, with uh. Uh other nonprofits, with other federal agencies to apply uh to other funds. And with those funds uh pay to the uh to the SBA, so that's another way. Also, some people use this, that the den- denigration letter, the denigration letter of SBA, the people attach that. For the application of FEMA, if they receive twenty thousand, thirty thousand, sometimes. The damages are so maximum is forty one thousand, if you receive less than that and you are not satisfied, you can uh you can. The denigration letter of SBA to see if they can increase you the initial amount of FEMA. So that's another way that the people use. Because what's the what's behind all of these, this is for the people uh in need with lack of resources. This is, this is a more affordable way to recover quicker and faster than applying with a fine normal financial. Typical financial institutions, so this is long term recovery. No uh no interest rate and the interest rate are fixed, they can be as low as two point thirty seven percent. The uh limits are higher, uh if if the people choose, the survivors, the people that is affected, that's how we call them. If they choose thirty years and they don't take a lot of thousands, I have seen payments of less than twenty dollars a month, twenty each a month. So that's the main purpose of all this, so that the so that the people can get back in their feet and recover. And continue with your lives, instead of just uh waiting for for something or applying for something. That they are not going to qualify, or they are not going to receive the money, or they have to move to live with their family. Or this is an alternative, like I always say, we are not the best option, but for some people, we are the only option and best option. We have approved more than twenty six million in this present presidential declaration, that's why we are still here. We are still uh helping people, the people is taking advantage of this, so we are doing good. So we are going to stay here uh a at least a couple of weeks more, sharing the information and that's what we, that's what we want. That's why we're still doing this meeting, so you all can have uh more knowledge uh about our federal agency. To to make the federal agency know, know, uh yeah, I'll help the people to see if we can still help. Uh one more business, one more homeowner, renter, nonprofits, and that's why we're still here, FEMA, SBA. Um yeah, if you all have uh any other questions, uh would be great to answer.
Well, thank you for that presentation, uh we were lucky, our town was not involved in as much flooding. As many of the other towns around here, um and I don't know if anybody has been displaced from their homes at all. So we were lucky, so um send the information and uh we will make sure it's available at the town office. And if anybody calls, then uh thank you.
Yeah, that that that's what I want, so I I'll uh send all the information with the hundred number, with the website. So because like you said, you you can have or you might have people from other towns or cities. Or you can have um citizens for your town with families from other towns or counties with more damages. That's why I'm doing all meetings in um all the towns with a lot of damages, uh no damages or a little bit of damages. So that's why I'm doing all this, so thank you so much for the time opportunity.
Thank you.
Man, if I can, I need to take a screenshot uh of me talking, if I can take a screenshot quickly. To prove to my supervisor that I did the meeting.
Yes, you did, you can do it.
So so something quickly here, not easy. I'm gonna take this.
We also have our meeting uh videotaped and it's on the Town Dover website, so you that is also going to be available.
And just send the link of you.
Yeah, the issue, oh, when is uh when is gonna be that uh available, like today, tomorrow or?
Tomorrow usually.
The uh.
Yes, usual, the next day usually, yes.
Uh okay, yeah, because uh sometimes it it takes like a a couple of days, that's why I I need to do the, I need to do the report like. For today, that's why I. No, no, thank you so much, man, for the time opportunity, bye.
Thank you, thank you, bye.
Bye.
Okay, we need to go into the Board of Liquor Control. Somebody want to make a motion?
Second, I'll take that.
So moved.
Okay, Scott moved it and Joe seconded it first, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have a first class liquor license for Southern Vermont Hospitality D B A Black Diamond Bar and Grill. Are are we good, Randy still here?
I'll say, yeah.
Thank, thanks, Randy.
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the first class liquor permit for who?
Southern Vermont Hospitality D B A Black Diamond Bar and Grill.
I make the motion with that, yes.
Second.
Any comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I need a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the consent agenda, the minutes of November seventh. Um and everybody was there, somebody want to make a motion?
Move that we accept the minutes of November seventh.
Any changes, additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh we have the warrants of November eleventh for seven million two hundred forty one dollar, two hundred forty one. Thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and ninety one cents.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Yes, um did somebody? Yes, um, did somebody, I know Dan and I came in and looked at the warrants. Did somebody else look at the warrants yet? Jeanette scanned them.
I scanned them.
I have not seen them. Which email was it? What I was looking for.
One with all the attachments. Um, it was sent this afternoon.
Okay, so they, we need at least one more board member.
I will, I had looked at
I didn't see it in.
I sent it at one thirty-eight. Says warrants for tonight.
Uh, I did not get a one thirty-eight. I got a twelve sixteen. I did never got a one thirty-eight.
Same.
Wow, hmm.
So I will look at him if I had him sent to me.
We can approve them pending another board member gets back to Jeanette in the morning that um they've looked at it and they're approving it.
That's fine. I can do that in the morning.
Same.
So I'll make a motion because Dan and I are the ones who should do this because we've seen them. That we tend, we tentatively approve the warrants for November ele- uh eleventh. Pending one more member's approval. Um, by what time, Jeanette? Ten?
Um. Yeah, or before noon tomorrow.
Before noon tomorrow, November twenty-second.
That's fine. Jeanette, for some reason, you did, if you put them, if you did scan them, they just get through. If you can look in your computer, because Scott and I never got it. So maybe you can do it again and I don't have to go down there. I can just look at it online. But I can always go down there, but be easier for me not to.
My apologies. I should have said something to you. Sorry.
Yeah, I know. It, well, it says it went through, so I'm not sure. It has five attachments to it.
Someone else has access to my email, so maybe they read it and deleted it, but it's not in my delete either.
Hmm, I didn't get anything. The last thing I got from you was a twelve sixteen.
But anyway, let's go.
No big deal. I'll I'll make it down there.
All right. Well, no, I can, I'll try sending them in separate attachments then. Maybe it was just too big a file.
Maybe. That's fine, whatever, if you can.
All right.
Dan, you wanna second that?
I second it.
Okay. So uh, we will, we will vote yes, Dan and I. And with the third person in will be the third vote. Does that work, Jeanette?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
All in, all in favor? Dan?
Aye.
No, you can't. You haven't seen the warrants.
Yeah, I'll eye tomorrow.
Okay, and I I approve it too.
Okay.
Um, thank you. FYI, we have a budget meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth at one o'clock. Then there's also directly after that is a Board of Abatement hearing at four thirty PM. Same place um, at the town office. The Dover Holiday Craft Fair, yay!
Yay!
December ninth, Town Hall from nine thirty to three. We have the Planning Commission meeting on the eleventh of December at six thirty PM. Trails and Rec Committee meets December twelfth at six thirty PM. Um, yes, Jeanette.
I I forgot to mention the Planning Commission is also meeting next Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh of November.
Yes, so.
Joe here. Can I speak?
Yes.
Yes, Joe.
I'm just checking. Um, so I will not be at the budget meeting November twenty-ninth, but any information, you know, that if they can email over or, you know, have available, I can look at. So I may be able to call in and and ask any questions, you know, I'll I'll be on the road, so. But I would like to see the preliminary stuff.
Well, are we gonna zoom it and record it so you can watch it?
Yeah.
Yes, so that that will be available as well.
Because we talked about it and you said you weren't going to, so.
I, we zoom all of our meetings. We'll zoom it and record it and then every, anybody can look at it.
Yeah.
So if you're zooming, I can zoom in.
Well, there we go.
What time is it again?
It's at one.
One o'clock.
And then, then the Board of Abatement. Uh, do we have any liaison reports? I see nothing. We need an exec- oh, Joe?
So we need an executive session.
We do.
We do?
Yes.
I didn't, I was unaware of that.
Well, I would like to have an executive session.
For what reason?
For uh, whatever reason, um, just uh getting something done.
It, well, is it, you gotta give me more than that for I, for me, and me, is it about
Personnel.
It's a per- it's a personnel reason.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I guess we will, we will have a short executive session. Jeanette, I will email you when we um
Thank you.
Come out and I'll give you the the details.
Um.
With the, with the, the end of the meeting.
Okay, but I can't, I can't, I can't close the meeting until you guys
Can Jeanette be here?
So.
Uh, yeah, Jeanette, Jeanette's fine to be there, yes.
Okay.
As long as it's short, Joe.
It is very short.
So, uh, does somebody wanna make an emotion to go into executive session at seven forty-seven?
Move that we go to executive session at seven forty-seven.
Second? So, yeah, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so.